Any of the town of Nagshead Board of Commissioners please come to order. At this time let's observe a moment of silence before we get started this morning. Let's play the allegiance.
I plead allegiance to the right of the United States of America, to the dear public for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to propose a one amendment to the agenda this morning before we adopt the agenda, and that would be a request to move the closed session on several items to after the planning agenda, after item G2. A motion that we adopt the agenda as amended.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded and in discussion. If not, on a favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign, and so ordered. Chief Zorick, you're up.
Morning Mayor, Board. It's a privilege and an honor to be here with you today alongside this dedicated group of individuals. Why don't y'all come on up if you would for some recognition. Last meeting, I gave a report to the Board on the 242 acre wildfire that we had in Nagshead Woods. And this is but a portion of the individuals representing agencies and personnel that were responsible for helping to extinguish that fire. There were in excess of 1,000 staff hours that were spent in this event, and what I can estimate, and Andy Hux might be able to narrow this down a little bit more, at least $60,000 in suppression expense. So it was a significant event for the town of Nagshead. It involved, in order to obtain success, the support and participation from everyone here today to receive recognition. I'd like to go ahead and just run down the line and recognize each individual and their agency very quickly. Deputy Fire Chief Shane Height from Nagshead, firefighter Mark Bernard, Nagshead, firefighter Anthony Dillon, Nagshead, Fire Captain Chip Holcomb from Nagshead, Fire Chief Troy Tilly from Kill Devil Hills, Fire Chief Thomas Jones from Roanoke Island Volunteer Fire Department, Kevin Brinkley from Nagshead Police, Andy Hux, NC Forestry, Fire Chief Glenn Rainey from Collington, Deputy Fire Chief David Phillips from Collington, Chief Jenny Jones from Dare EMS. We have Georgia Ellis here representing the Fire Marshals and the Dare Emergency Management Office, Aaron McCall from the Nature Conservancy, Buddy Sawyer, Dominion Power, and Deputy Fire Chief, or Deputy Police Chief Dana, well, you know, I try and upgrade you. Deputy Police Chief Dana Harris from Kill Devil Hills. And so this is just a portion of the people that were there at that fire and had something to do with allowing their staff. Also like to shout out to Phil Ruckel again, who was also on the fire, and thank you. Mike, come on up, you're here too. Needing no introduction, Mike Kelly, who was very supportive in bringing us food and much-needed operational tactical advice during the fire. Thank you, Mike, for being there. You could see why Mike was there in a very interactive role, I'm sure. I'd just like to say that during any event, challenges emerge that require participation and, you know, that we employ tactical flexibility and collaboration to succeed. Well, the Nagshead Woods fire was one of those events, one of those things that we hoped would never happen, and I can stand here today and say, I hope it never happens again. We're most fortunate in Nagshead, and I can attest to the excellent capabilities and disaster mitigation skills that are represented in Dare County, and when needed, come together. I know we're much more effective working together now than working alone, and I'm happy to report that during this emergency, local responders and the community worked together in a variety of ways to safely extinguish the largest fire in Nagshead Woods in recent history, thereby preventing any property loss or injuries. So it was a successful event, the way we evaluated it. So, Mayor?
Thank you, Chief Zorick. And from the town, I'd like to express our sincere thanks and appreciation to each of you, because this could have really been a real disaster if all of you had not worked together so closely and done such a fantastic job, and we certainly appreciate it. We really thank you so much. I'd like for you to come forward, all of you to come forward at this time. Town of Nagshead, North Carolina, special recognition is hereby presented to Nagshead Fire and Rescue, US Fish and Wildlife, Roanoke Island Volunteer Fire Department, Dare County EMS, Tillot Farm Trust, Dominion North Carolina Power, North Carolina Forestry, Nagshead Police Department, Collington Volunteer Fire Department, Kill Devil Hills Police Department, Kellis Reston, Dare County Communications, the Nature Conservancy, Kill Devil Hills Fire Department, Duck Volunteer Fire Department, Dare County Fire Marshal, Out of the Banks Brewing Station, Dare County Emergency Management. This is for your bravery, dedication, and suppression efforts in high life in fighting and assisting with the 242 acre fire in the Nagshead Woods, March 22nd, 26, 2016, presented by Board of Commissioners of this state. I'll ask that a representative from the Conservancy come forward, and I'll ask you to find a very appropriate place to hang this where the public can see it.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Thank you all very much. Chief Brinkley, you're up.
I'm sorry, sir.
Yeah, you were up next for proclamation of Peace Officers Memorial Day.
Yes, sir.
Tell us a little bit about it, and I'll read the proclamation.
Back in 1962, President Kennedy designated the week of May 15th as Police Week and the day of May 15th as Police Memorial Day. And each year, officers from across the country gather in Washington DC to pay tribute to those officers that paid the ultimate, or made the ultimate sacrifice. We have officers that will be attending this year with the widow of Sergeant Earl Murray, who was killed in the line of duty here at Nagshead on May the 15th, 2009. So whenever Ms. Kim, his wife, wants to attend, we always see that officers are there to escort her, and they'll be attending this year, leaving on May the 12th to go up there. So I thank the Board of Commissioners for doing this proclamation, and we do appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief Brinkley. And this is a Peace Officer Memorial Day and Police Week proclamation. Whereas, as a town, we rely on law enforcement's officers to keep our neighborhoods safe, enforce our laws, and respond in times of crisis. These men and women sustain peace and order across America, and we look to them as models of courage and integrity. This week, we honor their extraordinary service and sacrifice, and we remember the fallen heroes whose selfless acts have left behind safer streets and stronger communities. And whereas every day, peace officers face the threat of violence and danger, they routinely put their lives on the line to defend us, and the price of that bravery may result in injury, disability, or death. This dedication of our town's law enforcement officers warrants more than praise. And whereas, thanks to law enforcement officers, our town is more secure. They work with vigilance and dedication to identify and arrest those who seek to do us harm. During the week of May 15th through 21, 2016, we recognize their invaluable contributions to uphold injustice, enforcing the rule of law, and protecting the innocent. And whereas, let each of us take the time to reflect on the ultimate sacrifice Sergeant Earl Murray Jr. made for the town of Nagshead on May 15th, 2009, and the rest of the officers that have done so nationwide. And let each of us keep their families, friends, and all fellow officers in our thoughts and prayers. Now, therefore, the town of Nagshead Board of Commissioners does hereby proclaim May 15th, 2016, as Peace Officers Memorial Day, and May 15th through May 21st, 2016, as Police Week. The town of Nagshead Board of Commissioners does hereby thank everyone that dedicates themselves to this profession and to the public each and every day. Let each of us reflect on the ways in which our lives have been touched by the peace officers who stand guard over our neighborhood this fourth day of May 2016. Do I have a motion to adopt this proclamation?
Motion.
Second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Chief Brinkley, thank you so much.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you for all the work that you and all of your folks do for us.
Thank you, Mayor.
Chief Zorick? You have a proclamation on hurricane preparing this week? Do you want to tell us about that a little bit?
Well, I don't have much to say, other than May 16th through the 21st has been designated as National Hurricane Preparedness Week. Just like to take this opportunity to recognize that event and to advise all our citizens to look at being prepared for any eventuality. Of course, we hope that there's never a hurricane that affects Nagshead again, or tropical storm, or fire for that matter. But we know that by being prepared, we can minimize the effects of those disasters on the town.
You want to announce the Hurricane Preparedness Meeting that we're going to have later this month?
I can.
If you would, please.
I will. On May 20th, from 3:00 PM to 8:00 PM, at Fire Station 16, we will be hosting a Hurricane Preparedness Safety and Open House. And that's sponsored by Dare County and the town of Nagshead. And so there'll be quite a bit of information involved, presenting a lot of public outreach and education to citizens. There'll be some youthful events, the Fire Fit Test, the Fire Safety Trailer will be there, Nagshead Police will be there, about 20 exhibits altogether. And plus, we'll have a Speakers Bureau that will present during that day. So we're looking forward to that event, and we're in the planning phases right now, and looking forward to seeing everybody come up for that.
Good. Thank you very much, Chief.
Thank you.
This is Hurricane Preparing this Week 2016 proclamation. Whereas hurricanes and tropical storms can cause life-threatening hazards such as flooding, storm surge, destructive winds, tornadoes, and landslides. And whereas flooding claims lives every year, usually when motorists attempt to drive through flooded roadways. And whereas insurance companies suggest residents review and update their homeowners or owner's insurance policies to ensure it includes coverage for natural disasters. And whereas people should prepare their personal emergency supply kit to use at home or during an evacuation, with enough food and water to sustain the members of their household for three days or longer, know their evacuation routes, and comply with local and state authorities when asked to evacuate. And furthermore, the town of Nagshead understands the value of disaster preparedness and invites the community to attend the Hurricane Safety and Preparedness Open House on Friday, May 20th, from 3:00 PM until 8:00 PM at the Douglas Avery Mall Fire Station 16. Now, therefore, we, the town of Nagshead Board of Commissioners, do hereby proclaim May 15th through 21st, 2016, as Hurricane Preparedness Week in Nagshead, and commend its observance to all citizens this fourth day of May 2016. Do you have a motion to accept this proclamation?
Motion.
Second.
Second.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, there being none, so ordered. And Chief Zorick, you're up again for Accident Prevention Week. Shane?
Good morning, Shane. Good morning, Shane.
I'd like, if I could, call the rest of the Safety Committee that could attend this morning up, just to be recognized as well. I don't think anybody needs any introductions, but of course, Reeve Floyd, Ray Shunemaker, Jackie Hart, and Perry Hale could be here this morning. Thank you for the continued support to the safety program. The Safety Committee works to try to reduce the injuries and so forth in the town, recertify our Sharp Award that we were awarded a few years ago, that we have to annually recertify this year, like every first week of May. We put on several training events and sponsor a safety luncheon on Friday to hopefully raise some awareness in the employees with safety concerns and preventing injuries while in the workplace. So again, we thank you for the support, and thank you for the proclamation that you're about to read today. It's greatly appreciated by all of us and all the employees.
Shane, we thank you for everything you and the Safety Committee does. It's certainly made our town a much safer place to work.
Thank you.
And that's denoted by the awards that you've received for that. So we certainly thank you for those efforts. Accident, this is town of Nagshead, Dare County, North Carolina, Accident Prevention Week. Whereas the town of Nagshead Board of Commissioners, employees, and citizens are committed to the maintenance of a safe and healthful workplace. And whereas the town has assumed an active role in the promotion of a safe and healthful workplace by a program of regular occupational worksite evaluations and employee safety education. And whereas the town strives to stimulate and maintain the interest in loss control and accident prevention, and recognizes past and future services to the employees and citizens of Nagshead. And whereas the town seeks to guide and encourage the adoption of an institution of safe work practice by all employers and employees in Nagshead. Now, therefore, the Nagshead Board of Commissioners does hereby proclaim May 1st through 7th, 2016, as Accident Prevention Week in Nagshead, and commends its observance to our cities, citizens. Furthermore, in recognition of this proclamation, invite all Nagshead employees to attend the annual Nagshead Safety Luncheon on Friday, May 6th, 2016, from 12 noon to 2:00 PM at the Harvey Sound Access. This is the fourth day of May 2016. Do we have a motion to?
Some move.
Check. Moved and seconded. All in favor, we accept this proclamation, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, like sign. Shane and the committee, thank you so much for all the work that you do. We certainly appreciate it.
You're certainly welcome. Thank you.
I'd like for Andy and Kelly to come up just for a minute, if you would, please. We want to give you some citizens' feedback that you don't often get when you come up Mr. Ratzenberger had a conversation with Mr. Zimmerman at Holiday Inn, expressed last week, I missed Mr. Zimmerman, but Mr. Ratzenberger talked with him, and he expressed his appreciation for particularly Kelly, the work that you've done, and Andy, the entire planning department, on all the work that you did to help them get their job accomplished in 82 days. They were very impressed with the cooperation that they received from the town, and we certainly thank you for your efforts.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
At this time, this is a public comment section of our agenda. Anyone who has comments they'd like to bring to the Board that are not on the agenda as a public hearing later can do so at this time. We would ask that you hold your comments to no more than five minutes, and I'll ask Mr. Lighty if he would be the timer for this morning's session.
Yes, sir.
Thank you very much. Please state your name and address.
David Bragg, 5205 Esselings Drive, Nagshead, North Carolina. I'm here to address HB2. The Board has taken upon themselves to send a letter to the Governor concerning HB2 without giving the residents of Nagshead the ability to voice their opinion. Yes, you were elected by the people, but when there is an issue that could be discussed in an open forum with the people, I believe it should take place. There would have been plenty of time to have an open forum prior to sending this letter. I would like to bring to your attention other representatives and their outlook on this topic. The Tourism Board voted 12 to 1 to refrain from sending a letter, and only posted a short statement on their website that basically states, "The OBS welcomes all people." The Reverend Russ Howard, pastor of Cape Padres Baptist Church, addressing the Governor, said, "Our folks are praying for you. We want to thank you and encourage you for taking a stand on some things that are just common sense." Several others, several other pastors handed McCrory resolutions of support for HB2, and they said they would be issuing releases and statements of support in the near future. I would like to further bring to your attention what is happening at the national level. At the time I composed this, there were nearly 1.2 million signatures to boycott Target. Could you imagine the effect that number of people not coming to Nagshead would have on this economy because of the shortsightedness of this Board? This is a fire cry from the 25 cancellations that the local real estate companies reported. That was offset by three that said they would come because of this law, not 22 people, 22 people not coming versus 1.2 million people not shopping at Targets any further, and their stock going down, by the way. I have many other areas I would like to discuss, but due to the limited time I've been given to discuss this here, I will not. I will only address the email I received from the Mayor while he was sitting at the Dublin Airport. Maybe that's why this letter had to go out so quickly. Suzie, I don't plan to put this on the agenda unless someone, I would think someone from the, as a resident of the town, could have something put on the agenda, but I guess not. I don't plan to put this on the agenda unless someone would like for it to be placed on the agenda. I see no need to discuss further unless we want to talk about the lawsuit, which would be done in closed session. If anyone thinks differently, please let me know. Sitting in the Dublin Airport now, so back on Wi-Fi, have a good day. I would like to know what the lawsuit is that you're addressing in the email, and why it will be done in a closed session. At this time, I'm requesting any further action to be taken on HB2 be done in an open and transparent manner, and the residents of Nagshead, we the people, can have a voice in how the town moves forward, if at all. The silent majority has had enough of this political correctness, and we are not going to let our country go in the wrong direction any longer. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Would anybody else like to come this morning?
Hey, I'm Mike Jones. I own a property on Seagull Drive, 10210. And the first thing I'd like to do is thank the Public Works for the work that they recently did on Seagull Drive that now is enabling us to access our homes there. So I appreciate that, and the continued support for doing that through the end of the rental season until we can make a final decision about Seagull Drive. Wanted to report back to y'all. My wife came last month and talked to y'all, Terry Jones. We still have, as far as the homeowners on Seagull, we have still not been able to come to an agreement on either the north side or south side access, as far as alternative access, and I think y'all are aware of those concerns on both sides of that. So as a group of residents there, we have not been able to come to an agreement, and definitely seek y'all's advice and support, and if there is a motion to close the road, to help us with that accessibility, because that'll be critical to us as landowners and our rental community. The other thing that I want to do is make a request prior to the public meeting. I know in, as far as information to the resident owners, I know the town attorney had mentioned that there would potentially be more information that would be provided in this meeting around the Municipal Service District, and also around the consent by necessity, or easement by necessity. I think it's really important for me as a landowner, and I'm not an attorney by any means, but for us to be able to have all the information available to us as far as the different options prior to the public meeting, so that we can make an informed decision. Okay? Thank you.
Good. Thank you very much for your comments. Anybody else like to come this morning?
I'm Joe Polichak. I'm also on Seagull Drive. I don't want to repeat everything he just said, but we need access to the road. So, you know, what else can I say? Thank you.
Thank you very much, Joe. Anybody else like to come this morning? If not at this time, I'll declare that our public comment section is closed. Next item on the agenda is a consent agenda. Do we have a motion for acceptance of the consent agenda?
Some move.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Not on favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, like sign. There being none, so ordered. At this time, we have a public hearing to consider zoning ordinance text amendment to Town Code Section 48-407B to list municipally-owned recreation facilities as permitted use within the C2 General Commercial District. Mr. Lighty, I'll ask you to conduct that public hearing for us, please.
Yes, sir. At this time, we will open the public hearing to consider that zoning ordinance text amendment, which would revise Town Code Section 48-407B, and would allow municipally-owned recreation facilities as a permitted use within the CT General Commercial District. This is a legislative matter, and we will begin this public hearing with the presentation of the staff's analysis provided by Kelly Wyatt.
Thank you. Good morning, Mayor and Commissioners. As noted, this is a text amendment request to amend the C2 District, the General Commercial District, to allow municipally-owned recreational facilities as a permitted use within there. Right now, this use is only permitted in two districts within the town. The SEDAD district, which is a special environmental district, and that encompasses the Barnes Street Town Park. It's a conditional use in this district due to the sensitive nature, tree removal, topography, all of those things we deal with on a special nature in that district. This use is also permitted in the R2, which is the park, which encompasses Satterfield Landing Park. That park has some lighting fixtures. It generates quite a bit of noise due to the programmed fields, so it's a conditional use in that district. This proposal is to list this use within the C2 District, and staff feels that the C2 District, the purpose and intent of the district allows higher intensity range of uses, and therefore, having this used as a permitted use, not as a conditional use, would be appropriate. The Planning Board heard this at their March 16th meeting, and they voted unanimously to recommend adoption of the text amendment as it's presented.
Any questions for Ms. Wyatt?
Don't have any.
All right. Anything else, Kelly?
That's it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Would any member of the public care to comment on this proposed text amendment? Anything from the Planning Board? Does the Board wish to receive any further information about this before it begins its deliberations?
I don't think so.
If not, we will conclude the public hearing at this time, and the Board may begin its deliberations on this proposed zoning ordinance text amendment.
Is there any discussion on this text amendment?
Yes, sir.
If not, do we have a motion?
Make a motion to adopt the text amendment for municipally-owned recreational facilities as presented.
Second.
Motion then made and seconded. Any discussion on the motion? Not all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. There being none, so ordered. Thank you, Mr. Lighty.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
We have project updates from our Focus Nagshead update. Andy's going to give us that this morning.
Yes, good morning, Mayor and Commissioners. First, with the Focus Nagshead update, it's a very brief update this month. Basically, we're really, really getting into the drafting portion of the work effort. We've had a lot of meetings with the Advisory Committee. We've now been conducting meetings with department heads and with Board members, particularly to learn about their areas of interest or expertise, so that we can take that information and give it to the consultant. and give it to the consultant, incorporate it into the plan. Holly, in particular, has conducted about 23 meetings with these groups and individuals over the last month and a half, and we are actively working on drafting sections of the plan. So really, that's where this is at at this point. There's not a lot of committee work happening anymore at this point. We're going to be bringing back sections of the plan to review with the Advisory Committee and the Boards at later date. We do want to try and bring back the vision statement for the Board to take a look at in more detail. The Advisory Committee sort of signed off on that a month ago or so, and we want the Board's input on that before that becomes final, and we can finalize that and complete Chapters 1 and 2 of the plan. Regarding the schedule, we did provide a Gantt chart. The schedule has slipped a little bit. We are in the comprehensive planning portion of the two-part project. The ordinance project would happen later this year or begin. All I can say is that at this phase of the project, the fees were broken up with the consultant, heavier with staff involvement at this point, the consultants more heavily involved in the ordinance drafting, and so we are working hard to find the time to do this. We want to give you a quality product, so we feel like it's better to take the time to do that rather than rush it, so I just wanted to make you aware of the schedule. It is slipping probably about a month or two. We'll continue to provide the Gantt charts every month and keep you updated on the progress. It is our goal to try and provide you with a draft comprehensive plan that you can review this summer and then begin to work through. The second update is the sea level rise. This, we needed a little bit more input from the Board on. As you recall, back in December, December 7th and 8th, we conducted workshops with the public. The VCAPs process in particular, Jessica Whitehead and Lisa Chiavenato led that effort with our staff to engage the community in planning scenarios process for looking at the future impacts of sea level rise and the types of things the town might need to begin considering to look ahead 20 to 30 years in regards to sea level rise. Lisa and Jessica have been drafting a report to document what happened during that two-day process. They've given us a draft of that. We've provided some staff comments, but we feel like we need to get some of the folks who were involved in those workshops engaged in looking at the plan to make sure it's accurate and reflects everything that happened during those two-day workshops, so we would like to try and do that. We have suggested a group to get together to go over the plan, so that way we could bring back a final draft for the Board's review. I think you have seen a list of names. I've given Roberta a list of names that we're suggesting be involved, and she's showing that on the screen right now. There has been discussion about the, who should be on this list. So basically, what we're suggesting is that out of the three groups we had from the sea level rise workshop, we wanted at least two members from each of the groups to be represented in reviewing the draft plan. You had a group in the library, you had a group in the boardroom, and you had a group in the conference room in the town hall. And so this list includes at least two people from each of those groups. We've also got a few additional people on here. There's a couple people from the Coastal Studies Institute we've added here. Both of those people attended the workshops. One is Reed Corbett. He was one of the two individuals that gave the science portion of the presentation at the beginning of the workshop, and if the group starts to discuss, you know, what we're going to use for planning purposes for sea level rise, he might be helpful in us determining what factor of sea level rise we might be using for planning purposes, much like the science panel did for the CRC. We also have Andy Keeler. He's more of a policy-level person. He was in the conference room, and we thought it would be good to engage him in looking at this report as well. We had a few extra individuals on this list that had signed up at the meeting to be on the Steering Committee. We only had four people that had signed up at the meeting, so we wanted to include them on here as well because they had signed up. So essentially, that's what you're looking at this list, is two people from each of the groups, the people that signed up, and a few additional people that will help us with the science and policy portions of this document. And this is obviously not part of the Focus NAGS Head process. This is a separate process. You know, this report will be finalized at some point, and then, you know, we'll have to decide what we're going to do with it then. You know, it will start moving, you know, on its own path, whether we want to use it for shoreline planning or stormwater planning. It will start to become something that we look at when we're making other policy decisions. So we do have some Focus NAGS Head people in here. I think we have a couple of those, just to help bridge the gap between this process and that process, even though they will be separate. I can certainly answer any questions about the suggested list. I think it's our goal to meet with this group, if the Board approves it, and then come back with a final draft of the report by your July meeting.
Okay. This would be, what I'd like to do is appoint this as an ad hoc committee with the stated purpose of convening another meeting of people who attended the VCAPs workshop to ensure that the report and diagrams are inclusive and capture the discussions of each of the three groups prior to moving a draft forward to the Board of Commissioners. This would be the specific purpose for this ad hoc committee and would serve just for this one purpose at this time. Is there a discussion on appointing this as an ad hoc committee for that specific purpose?
Commissioner Demers and myself still included in that?
Yeah.
Yes, I was just thinking about that.
Commissioner Ratzenberg and Commissioner Demers would also be part of that committee.
I think we can get away with three. Three per room, otherwise a committee, we're getting, this is awful big. My own opinion is to keep it in NAGS Head people. Technical expertise was provided in four, or maybe after.
Commissioner Coon, do you have a comment?
Just a question as to the timeline.
Yeah, the timeline would be, we would try to be getting this group together within the next few weeks. We do have Jessica and Lisa scheduled to come here on the 19th of May. Hopefully, we can get the group together then when they're here. If not, then so be it. But our goal would be to have the group review the report and bring the Board back a final draft version of the report for review at the July meeting. I think the June meeting is going to be a little bit too aggressive for us to get it back to you.
Any other questions?
Mark, what room were you in? Conference room. So we don't have a library.
We've got two library people there.
And a couple unsure.
I think Commissioner Walters was in the library.
Oh, we don't want to get three on that.
Can't you, we can't do that.
Eight, two, three.
It looks like there are about 11 people there, if I count it right. If we have a meeting, undoubtedly, there'll be some people that can't make it, so that would cut down the size a little bit.
I think it's, I don't think we need any larger. Would the Board like to make a motion to appoint this ad hoc committee, or would you prefer that I just go ahead and appoint it?
Let's agree to consensus.
Okay. We have a consensus that this ad hoc committee should be appointed with that specific purpose, including Commissioner Ratzenberg and Commissioner Demers on it. I think we got enough head nods.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
All right, we'll go ahead and get that group together, and let's go on the sea level rise.
As I read this chart, we're supposed to have a whole bunch of stuff here Monday, and it's not. The drafting of the document, staff consultant, was due Monday, the 2nd. That shows as late on the chart.
Talking about the Focus NAGS Head?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's about a two month, the project's two months behind from the original schedule.
I understand that, but it just keeps showing September as the deadline here, 7th, and yet if we're two months behind, something needs to be sliding in between to make up for it. But where are we in terms of being able to hit this thing? I'm concerned. We put a lot into this thing.
I guess it's my philosophy that I kind of directed staff on, let's keep the Gantt chart where the project was scheduled, and that gives us a measure of how far ahead or how far behind we are on the schedule. And then we'll have to determine, based on that, where it might end up. In the meantime, we're looking at shifting priorities, moving priorities, and see if some of that two-month behind can be made up.
Yeah, I guess that's a different philosophy than I was used to, where we, where the stuff, I mean, you made up the slack somewhere, you made up the, somewhere, or.
To keep the Gantt chart the way it was, start with, what's your project schedule? Then you know what, how you're doing.
Okay, but September seems a little far away right now.
Or maybe it's too soon.
Well, it's out of region, at the rate it's going. All right, I was just checking.
And anything else, Commissioner?
I'd like to ask a question of Andy. We're looking at some slippage here, but does that imply any funding implications, or is that fenced separately and the slippage has nothing to do with?
It's not having any impact on the funding, you know? I mean, the budget is what it is, and, you know, with this comp plan, it was a divided effort between the consultant and staff, and we knew that. And so, I mean, it's really the staff that is having the issue with the schedule, and there's just, with this type of project, it's dangerous to come up with a schedule like this. You're doing your best, you know, to come up with a two-year schedule, but, you know, there's a lot of moving targets when you're meeting with committees, when you're going through public involvement process, where you might have to do multiple rounds of comments with multiple boards. Maintaining a type of schedule like this is tough for this type of project, and we understood that. So this schedule is our best estimate of what we were trying to do, but, you know, I mean, I think that.
I understand completely. Appreciate what you're doing.
I'm making excuses at this point, but.
Right.
You're doing a pretty good job of it.
Recognized, very good, very good, but recognized.
Doing a good job of it. Andy, thank you a lot.
Right, with a software project.
Mark, report from the Planning Board chair.
Can I do that? Make an excuse? Mayor, Commissioners, good morning. At our April meeting, we had two action items to consider and one discussion item. First, we considered a conditional use vested right request submitted by VHB Engineering on behalf of the Tourism Board related to the event site. The modifications that they're looking at are to elevate or to enclose and condition the pavilion space and elevate that structure to the regulatory flood elevation. And also, they're requesting the vested right approval to allow greater timeframe for the initial construction. Now, the biggest impact that this had was regarding, or with regard, to parking. By going to the enclosed and conditioned space, then that changes the use to indoor public assembly, which would require 320 spaces. Now, we know that that's not realistic for the event site. We know that there are a lot of events there that would require even more parking than that, seafood festival for being one, and we know from experience that alternative parking works. So the Planning Board concurred with staff that the parking issue should not prohibit moving forward with the Phase 2 construction at the event site. So we have, we did approve the conditional use vested right request and forward it to the Board.
Good.
And second, and finally, we have a sign ordinance. The one thing I do want to note, though, with regard to previous additions of the sign ordinance, there were really no changes regarding rooftop signs and rooftop sign regulations. But based on input from the Local Business Committee and information with regard to staff, you will see in the version that you get revisions to those rooftop signs. So I just wanted you to be aware that that was not something that was in the ordinance that we've been working on for the last several months, but it will appear in the ordinance that you get, and it will go for public hearing. And then our discussion item, we brought back the issue and discussion regarding cottage courts as a permitted use. As you know, they remain non-conforming, even though over the, in the past, we have relaxed the rules regarding repairs and additions and so on. But staff advised the Planning Board that the Focus Advisory Committee has discussed cottage courts, and I think also at the Local Business Committee, that they may represent a more viable alternative to hotels from a development and land use compatibility standpoint. We agreed with that, and will begin a detailed review and discussion at our meeting this month. Any questions?
Thank you for that work, and appreciate you all moving forward on the cottage court issue. I think that's going to be something we really need to take a look at. Any questions for Mark? Now, at this time, we're, we're going to incorporate all of our closed sessions that we have listed down through the agenda and move into closed session at this time. And Mr. Lighty, I'll get you to give us the correct section of the code for that, please.
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor. At this time, the Board needs a motion to enter closed session in order to consider and improve the closed session minutes in accordance with General Statute 143-318.11A1 to consider the presentation of awards or honorariums and to keep them confidential until they need to be disclosed under General Statute 143-318.11A2, and to confer with the town attorney regarding a matter within the attorney-client privilege and to protect that privilege in accordance with General Statute 143-318.11A3.
Do we have a motion to that effect?
So.
Motion to move and second it. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. We move into closed session, will probably be a while. Thank you very much. Board of Commissioners, back in open session. Mr. Lighty, I'll ask you to report out on the closed session, please.
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor. The town did discuss the various topics that they entered closed session to discuss. They did discuss, and consensus is not to join in, the lawsuit brought by a group of municipalities to challenge House Bill 2. In addition to that, the town took action regarding the award of the Lightkeeper and NAGS Head or honorariums. Those will continue to be confidential until they are disclosed. Beyond that, the town did not take any other actions.
Thank you very much. Next item on the agenda is old business. This will be discussion of the closing of Seagull Drive. Mr. Lighty, would you lead that, please?
Yes, sir. At the last meeting, there was some discussion about the potential options of using either a Municipal Service District or special assessments as a means of having the town seek reimbursement for costs associated with the maintenance and repair of Seagull Drive, and we have looked into those options. Our opinion is that with respect to special assessments, that there's pretty good, pretty good language that we believe would allow the town to use the special assessment process as a means for passing on the costs of maintenance and repair to the owners served by Seagull Drive. However, the special assessment process is pretty cumbersome and just not very easily used. It's something that the town has to go through every single time it makes an expenditure, and so that is not a very mechanically practical way of doing this. With respect to the use of a Municipal Service District, Municipal Service Districts can be established for various purposes, and one of those purposes is to place properties into a district to help finance the costs of certain types of improvements, including beach erosion control works and flood and hurricane protection works. We believe that repairs and improvements made to Seagull Drive, if they constitute an erosion control mechanism or a flood or perhaps hurricane protection work, that that's something that could be the basis for establishing an MSD. Municipal Service Districts are a lot easier to establish and. and a lot more useful, or easier to use, I should say, in raising funds. But there are some issues with respect to the level of maintenance that would be required in order to use that process. There was a mention earlier today about the concept of easements by necessity. That is something that was discussed last, at the last meeting as a way of owners obtaining alternative access. However, that's something that we can't provide an opinion on because the ability to obtain an easement by necessity really is based on an examination of the facts, particular to each individual property. That's something that the owners really need to explore with their own counsel to see whether they would be able to obtain an easement by necessity. That's something that's a process that allows the owner to obtain an easement over the property owned by someone else. The town would have no role in that particular kind of process, unless it was the property owner over whose property someone wanted to obtain an easement. And in this particular case, I don't think there's any way that the town has property that's configured in such a way that people would be obtaining an easement by necessity over the town's properties. But those are the items that I was planning on reporting on for today's meeting. Of course, at the June One meeting, the town will be holding the public hearing to consider the closure of Seagull Drive. And of course, that's a legislative hearing at which the public will be allowed to participate, and the board will be given an opportunity to take potential action to close Seagull Drive.
Thank you, Mr. Lighty. Are there any questions for Mr. Lighty? Any other discussion at this time? This will be a public hearing at our June First meeting. So we will defer further discussion until that time. Next item of committee reports. Commissioner Rassenberger, you're on the agenda for several reports there.
Okay. All righty, let's see here. We'll start with ARPO, the Albemarle Rural Planning Organization. We met on the 27th last Wednesday. And I'll just, I'm going to hit several items here. The legislature has introduced House Bill 102, which is ferry tolling, opposition to ferry tolling. And it says, "No ferry tolling and appropriates 13.8 million for maintenance and this and that of ferries throughout the state." So that's been introduced. It's not 102, it's 1002, excuse me, House Bill 1002. The Ferry Division produced a slideshow that they had presented to several of the representative, Tyne and Torbit, about things that gave quite a bit of information on finances on the ferries themselves and with the implication, I think, or the statement, that 13, 14 million is not going to make up for the needs of Ferry Division, which, if I read this right, and it's, is something like 70 million a year for both operations, maintenance, and capital improvement. An average of 70 million a year, actually 72 million a year, and they currently receive 2 million from tolls. So it's 70 million after tolls, which, in my mind, says that tolls aren't significant to the needs of Ferry Division. Why have them if they're not going to solve a problem? I mean, they're really not solving a problem. However, it's an extensive, it's an extensive discussion, and I have tons of charts and diagrams that I'm not even going to go into. I'd be glad to, if somebody has any questions, that we can sit down and see if I really understand them. So ferry tolling is still an active issue. The second item, I have here, spot report. This is the prioritization of transportation, the thing we're interested in. Corey, here's a spreadsheet. Look at that. Okay, we just got the highway, the highway scoring. In fact, we had to conduct it at the session, which was very interesting because we're faced with a huge spreadsheet. And as, again, the process is still that scoring doesn't determine money. Money determines scoring. Now, that's my statement of how it works. But we're kind of told that as projects come down, well, you can't afford them, so you should put your score elsewhere where you can afford them. So getting the priority project that you want may or may not. It's still a confusing issue. Regardless of all of that, the widening of 158 that I've talked about in previous sessions and the Business Committee and all of that was given the counties 100 points. So that's our priority, and it's possibly good for funding, moving up toward the top for us. Now, I talked with Commissioner Shea at the meeting about getting a county plus each of the towns to do an endorsement or something, requesting the formal study take place. And that would help our scoring if the study were moved forward. And Jack said, yes, he would bring that up, but I really don't know if he brought it up at the county meeting Monday or not. I was, I didn't listen to it, and I don't know if he brought it up. But maybe, do you have a mayor or a commissioner reading or something?
Not until the third Tuesday.
Okay. I don't know how big a crisis it is, but maybe I'll just try and follow up with Bobby or something. If not, I mean, we could all do it. But it would help, it would help with our scoring if we had then the feasibility study being conducted would help our, would help the scoring on the project. So anyway, we did, I think, bury the flyover up there, up at the intersection of 158 and 12. I think that got buried. And no real joy on Alligator River Bridges or anything, but, I mean, they're so expensive in the long term, but that's good. Okay, so that covers highway. And then, we didn't do any scoring, but Andy and I both have been, we have been working on the bike and ped one that came in. And both of our projects are there, where they won't be scored until next, our next, next meeting. That's the timing of it. But Andy and I have found some shortfalls in the scoring methodology. Both of them are in the top 20. But in the case of, in the case of both of them, the, no safety data whatsoever yet. Police Department has given us accident information, and that's been submitted to be updated. And the Gaul, the Jeanette's to Gaul path up 12 didn't list Tangeros at the other end of the path, so we're not getting credit for mixed, even though it's at the start of the one, it's not at the end of the other. That's been submitted, and we're going to continue to look for other things that would potentially enhance our scores. Right now, and I don't know what this means, I don't take it to the bank, but our 158 thing is number two out of 20, so...
Might have a possibility there, there.
It might. It all depends, with the understanding that we're doing five-year, five-year increments of money, and we've already spent all of this year's money, and I'm not sure this is... So this is, we're looking at the 2020, 2025 range for money out there, and money's already spent through that period. So don't know, but we are actively working to be sure we score as well as we can. So I will take care to request. And lastly, I got to go over for the, Chris, and you know, the dredge manio, built in Louisiana, assembled here. It'll enable Ferry Division to keep ferry channels, emergency routes like Stumpy Point to Rodanthe, some inlet stabilization and stuff navigable down to a depth of 30 feet. Pipeline dredge, pretty automated, so big day for Ferry Division. So that was ARPO, or any questions on that? No?
No.
Okay, what did I have next? BWA, let me find that file. We got to meet, the, the board has been reorganized down there since the, all of the changes that have taken place. And we have a new director, Kathleen Riley, and that's R.I.E.L.Y. So that's an odd spelling there, but that's okay. And beach protection, beach protection, we're going to have to, basically, the message is, beach protection will be without federal help. We need to establish our own dedicated funding source, work a consensus view, not mixed and not self-interest, collaborate and cooperate, find threads of commonality from Murphy to Manio and address them, you know, for self-interest. And that was kind of echoed by, we had Senator Brown and Senator Sanders, State Senator Brown and State Senator Sanderson, and Rep. Isla...
Isler.
Isler. As lunchtime speakers, and they echoed the same thing. The legislature is confused when everybody's clamoring for attention. It says you need to get working together, and so that isn't what she wants to focus on, and hoping that will come forward in the future.
I'll reallocate sales tax for that, I guess.
Whatever. We tried to stay away from most of those things. We had some interesting presentations, had a good one on waters of the U.S., and you remember, we complained about that. Well, that thing is, the quote I got is, "It's stuck in a procedural morass," just as we might expect. The message on sea level rise that we ought to be putting out and to anybody is, "We're here to adapt." Stop, you know, getting off of just, adaptation is what our role is, and all of the philosophical issues are immaterial. There was some interesting discussion on that development line, which we did not, we did not adopt it. But there were some towns down there that really liked that idea. And I think they were looking at, oh, boy, maybe people can push forward more development and this and that, and they were quite surprised when I said, "We didn't, we didn't want that." But then I showed them our jagged little coastline and some of those, and the housing, and some of those who have nice neat little houses in a straight row got a better idea of the picture. It's interesting. Our beaches are infrastructure. And a comment would be that there's a standard, I think it's several percent a year, of town infrastructure should be scheduled for maintenance and repair every year, and we should be including that. And that's kind of the direction we're heading now with the, with the new contract we're working. But we put it in that and just start talking about that as town infrastructure. Flood mapping, that got to be a good one, and I give this because theoretically we're going to see our draft sometime. They taught, there was a great deal of talk about how the finer mesh and more, 20 years more data gives more accuracy, but then they talked about the model itself, which is still like 1940s era and doesn't credit an awful lot in it, and brought up the interesting thing that when they do come out, it's still going to be based on thousand-foot transects. But there could be a line diagonally, you know, but a thousand feet between, the actual line may be diagonally or whatever, could put properties within that thousand-foot transect on one side or the other of the flood zone. So be prepared for people having to, you know, if they come out and their neighbor's out of the flood zone and they're still in it. So it's going to be interesting. Sea level rise is not considered, and basically, it uses the Core and FEMA standards for hurricane protection, and it's going to be interesting. So Senator Sanderson talked quite a bit about, where's Willow? This Willow left, about insurance and that. It's a sooner or later, they're going to figure out that the coast is subsidizing the other 80 counties in terms of insurance, and the inland, inland is not prepared. We need to have a group. Single counties and municipalities won't be heard with a single message. FEMA, FEMA appeals, beach nourishment is, and this kind of, kind of got into CRS, beach nourishment is considered erosion control and not hurricane protection, which is kind of why, you know, we keep talking about the core project being overdesigned. That's because it was technically designed for the 100-year hurricane and not what we were doing, but who could, nobody could afford it or have room for it. Going to look at a brand-new beach and inlet management plan. And that, so I think that is rather lengthy. I think that covered that. What else did I put on here?
YMCA.
Yeah, I just, that's enough, I talked it up already.
Commissioner Coon?
The Business Committee did meet in April, and we invited representatives from various businesses to come in to discuss outdoor displays. It was really a fairly well-attended meeting and had lots of discussion and input for the Business Committee to consider. So we'll be meeting, since we only meet every other month, we will be meeting in June and be discussing that. Since Commissioner, Mayor Proton Walters is not here, this is National Tourism Week. Hope to everybody, there's, Visitors Bureau is holding a meeting later this week that people have been invited to, but we want to remember to welcome our visitors. Our economy's getting busier, start to see a few more people moving around, so that's good for us as we get some of that shared revenue. And just to point out that the Coastal Resources Commission meets in Manio next week at the Dare County Board of Commissioners Boardroom on Tuesday and Wednesday, Tuesday afternoon and Wednesday. So I would invite anybody that wants to attend to come over to the CRC meeting.
Tuesday and Wednesday.
Yes, and it does have public comment sessions if anybody's interested in making public comments.
Commissioner DeBarry?
Just one item, the Albemarle Solid Waste Management Authority will be having their annual budget meeting coming up later this month. I think it's on the 19th. And been in contact with the primary rep, Jack Shea, and also aware that Bobby Outman will be attending. Now, we'll not be able to attend that, but we'll be more than well-covered at the meeting.
Good, thank you. Town manager, and I met with Peak Resources on the 22nd to discuss progress on the renovations to Peak Resources' nursery home. We met with the principals, and they introduced their new project, the project manager that they've hired to move this work along. The 200 Hall is projected to be complete by the end of May, and the total project by year-end. That's Harold, Peak, Harold's schedule, he's the present schedule. We will continue to meet with them monthly to monitor progress and push towards getting this project completed, the way it was supposed to be.
Have they hired a new director-mayor?
Yes, they have.
Okay, thank you.
New directors on board, we met her. And I think they've finally got their organization very well together.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is consideration of the board appointments. This is to the Board of Adjustments. Judy Burnett is, her term has expired. She would like to be reconsidered for appointment. You've got the chart of other... You've got the chart of other applicants.
I'll make a motion to reappoint Judy Burnett to another term.
Okay.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded, any discussion? If not all in favor of reappointing Judy Burnett to the Board of Adjustments, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, likes, and there being none, it's a order. David Ryan, got consideration of the RFQs for the Engineering Consulting Services for Beach Rinnährishment Shoreline Management Project.
Good morning, Mr. Mayor, Board of Commissioners.
Good morning, David.
Roberta, can you bring that up for me? All right, at, I've got a, just a very brief presentation, just to give the overview of the process that we've gone through for the determination of this recommendation. A request for qualifications was presented to the board at their February 3rd, 2016 Board of Commissioners meeting. In there, it outlined not only the qualification-based selection process that local governments must follow for the choosing of professional service providers, but also gave a brief outline of some of those objectives and goals that we wanted to achieve, not only in the short term for the next maintenance project, but also long-term and looking out a minimum of 30 years. That request for qualifications was finalized on February 5th, 2016, and released publicly. We had contacted seven coastal engineers and had also advertised it on the website. Those requests for qualifications were due on March 22nd, 2016. We had received three submissions, one from Coastal Science and Engineering, CSNE, Coastal Planning and Engineering slash CBNI, and also Moffett and Nickel. So we had three very strong submissions that were made. So the process for the evaluation of those submissions was conducted in two separate parts. The first part was a review of the statement of qualifications and the material submitted from each, each one of the respondents, as well as a separate respondent interview. So there was an internal staff committee that was developed to perform the statement of qualification review, and that consisted of the town manager, the planning director/deputy town manager, the public information officer, as well as myself. The criteria that we used for that evaluations followed that information that was described in Section 4 of the RFQ, and the, the review was completed independently by each one of the committee members. The second part was the interview portion, and the, there was a, a separate committee. Actually, Roberta was replaced with Commissioner Ratzenberger due to the fact that Roberta had a scheduling conflict at that time for the interviews, so they swapped out, the other committee members stayed in place. Each one of the respondents was interviewed, the format consisted of a brief PowerPoint presentation, and then there was a Q&amp;A session that followed, and we had a standard set of questions. It was 14 questions that we asked each one of the respondents, which expanded upon the information that was outlined within the RFQ. There were score sheets that were associated with each one of those questions. They were completed independently by each one of the committee members, and then submitted from there. The totals from the two portions were compiled, and a numerical average was calculated in order to rank the respondents, and from that, it was determined that Coastal Science and Engineering was determined to be the highest-ranked based upon the evaluation criteria given within the RFQ. So the request today would be to authorize the town manager to enter into a contractual negotiations with CSNE for an agreed-upon fair and reasonable compensation. And just an item of note, that based upon the RFQ, we had broken out into short-term and long-term management, and the scope of this work may be partitioned out in order to move forward more rapidly with the more critical path, which is the environmental permitting for the next maintenance project, which is projected right now for summer of 2018. So included in your packet are, is some supplemental information to include the listing of firms contacted, as well as the respondents and their submissions, meeting the criteria of the RFQ, the submission evaluation form, the interview form, as well as the scoring tabulations. I'll be glad to answer any questions you may have.
Any questions for David?
Just one, as we move forward with whomever we pick, and I noticed you, CSNE's recommendation, will there be any input given as to issues from the last project in helping to design the new project?
Yes, both from staff and also from the public. That will be the first part in the planning process in moving forward.
Okay, 'cause I think there's gonna be a lot of public input, there's a lot of interest in how a new design works.
Yes, and, and we tried to touch on that with a lot of the questions that we had outlined within the RFQ, and then also within the interview process, so really looked in-depth into some of the concerns and questions that we had over the prior project.
Thank you very much.
Any further questions for Dave? Okay, we need a motion to proceed with, to allow the town manager to proceed with contract negotiations with, with CSNE.
I make a motion that the town manager proceed with negotiations with CSNE.
That's second.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, discussion of the motion. If not all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign.
I'm fine.
That being done, so ordered, the town manager can, and David can proceed.
All right, thank you very much.
Next item is presentation from our town manager, town manager recommended 16, 17-year fiscal year budget.
All right. Oh, boy. Oh, boy.
Roberta has your 2000, fiscal year 2017 manager's recommended budget that she'll pass, pass out to you. For your consideration is the manager's recommended budget for fiscal year July 1, 2016 through June 30, 2017. The budget has been prepared in accordance with the North Carolina Local Government Fiscal Control Act as required by NC General Statute, Chapter 159-11. This budget was a result of a great deal of hard work from a number of people that I want to thank, particularly Deputy Town Manager Andy Garman, our Finance Director Amy Miller, as well as Deputy Finance Director Kim Blankenberg, PIO Roberta Thumann, and Human Resources Director Bree Floyd, as well as town staff, the town department heads. And I want to thank the department heads, I've told them that I appreciate that they didn't do to me what a group of department heads did in a county south of us and requested $40 million more in expenditures than they had in revenues. Our employees do a great job of understanding the situation we're in. As part of the budget process, department heads were once again asked to directly relate requests for new or expanded programs to the town's vision and value statements. And as a reminder, what they are listed as is, "We value a healthy, natural environment. We value a customer-friendly, financially-stable, and technologically-forward government. We value livable, well-maintained neighborhoods, value a safe, nurturing, and family-friendly environment, high-standard, efficient infrastructure, as well as value in our local businesses." And additionally to these vision and value statements, we also are aware of the board's specific strategic areas of focus, and this manager's recommended budget allocates funding to each one of those being parks and recreation, sanitation and recycling, Naxhead Promotion, shoreline management, and stormwater management. First, I'll start just within, gonna kind of go through and give you the highlights of the budget. The recommended budget for the upcoming fiscal year is $16,229,920. That's down because the lack, well, the not proposing a tax rate for the MSD, so that lowers partly due to not having that revenue, the less revenue of, the budget's $3,216,364 less than it was in the present fiscal year, or a decrease of 16.54%. Inter-funds at $1,873,118, and that's made up of excess taxes for future rinnährishment facility fees, and a penny for parks and paths, and a penny for stormwater, which I'll get to as a new part of this budget. Told you what the, what the values, as well as listed out these values in the strategic areas. The tax base for the present fiscal year, which is what we calculate the revenue on for next fiscal year is $2,314,829,805. This budget does recommend a 3-cent tax increase, 1 cent generates $230,904. The present tax rate is .267 cents, proposed to go to .297. And again, the municipal service district tax rate for the upcoming fiscal year is recommended at a zero tax rate. I'm very proud, again, to note that our collection rate is based on 99.75% collection, which is the envy of probably every municipality in the state. The general fund levy, $6,951,016. The listing out some of the capital projects, those that we're paying cash for include recommended $25,000 to be funded for website redevelopment, recommending $32,000 to replace the Station 21 leased fiber to fixed wireless, boardwalk planning, an easement acquisition of $15,000, and Public Works, a new Toro Z master mower of $8,500, improvements to the Hargrove Beach access of $45,000, improvements to the Outer Banks Medical Center building of $25,000. We need additional funding to replace the roof on Station 16 of $50,000, bringing that up to 140 with this year's carryover, Station 21 roof of $40,000, maintenance of Public Works Garage, $25,000, taser repla, taser replacements, $6,473, and a Furno Power stair chair, which will assist public safety in transporting patients up and down flights of stairs. Capital projects that are financed, we have included first-year debt service for new financial software of $59,116, first-year debt service for a Ford F-350 service truck for our maintenance garage, $72,000 total, first-year debt service is $18,806, a compressor in the fire department of $28,000, and debt service of $7,313. Funded from, by reserves, facility fees in order to enclose the office space in the planning department of $35,000, a COVAC cleaner from our stormwater fund of $14,366, funded by grants, Doughty Park Phase 2 of $500,000, and an active shooter project grant of $24,000. The use of the Parks and Path penny, we have the fourth of five years of debt payment on our Doughty Park purchase of $102,360, Doughty Park Phase 1 development of $120,000, Beach Road, Beach Road multi-use path repairs, $25,000, and construction of a dog park adjacent to Satterfield Landing of $30,000. This next slide will show you, you have to, we'll have, you'll have to come back to this one. This is a very busy slide, but it shows you the general fund expenditures. Typically, what you've seen is Public Works is one whole piece of this pie and then broken out, but in this particular graph, you'll see where a portion of each of our expenditures are allocated. General fund revenues, again, the, I want to note here that we're, the sales tax has remained, we've budgeted, recommended it at relatively flat, flat with an increase over this present fiscal year of $28,729. Occupancy and land transfer are both budgeted at reductions, partly because of the distribution of shares. Occupancy of $108,155 less, land transfer $35,802 less. Of interest is to this slide, I think to note is the ad valorem taxes. When we look at the percent or the, the percent of our budget as a whole for revenues, ad valorem taxes make up 42%, and I think it's, we're fortunate that we can keep a relatively low tax rate because of the additional revenues that we get from sales tax, occupancy, and other related sources. Contributions, well, let me back up first, I didn't want to mention here changes in personnel. This, we did, the board authorized a pay and classification study in this current fiscal year, and that has been completed, so funds are budgeted to implement recommendations from the pay and classification study. There's $44,486 budgeted to address compression in the general fund, $3,963 in the water fund, a salary adjustment for all employees is budgeted at $126,537 in the general fund, $10,855 in the water fund. And salary grades have also been recommended to be adjusted for certain position, for about nine positions, the, as well as currently our grades, the entry-level grade is at a grade nine, and we're recommending that we start our grades at grade one. And also, we're recommending that July 1, start the first year of reinstating the merit-based system with funds available recommended in the FY 18 budget. And also, there is a new position recommended in the, in the water department, but I'll get to that. The financial contributions to community groups, and this is the same allocations that were recommended in the present budget, nature conservancy, $10,000, interfaith outreach, $3,000, legal women voters, $100, and room at the inn, $750. Health insurance, this is- Health insurance. This is a pleasant surprise, and I want to commend the board and thank the board for contracting with a health insurance brokerage firm in an effort to ensure a balance between the cost and benefit of health insurance premiums. Due to this, we've, partly due to this, we're seeing a resulted six percent decrease in our health insurance rates compared to the current fiscal year. The breakdown of this, and I'll just give you an idea, the savings that we're seeing in the general fund, we're saving in the general fund, a hundred-and-fifty-two thousand dollars, a hundred-and-fifty-two thousand, four-hundred-and-seventy-two dollars. There's a slight increase in the water fund. That's due to the new recommendation of a new employee as well as some changes in health insurance, but that increases three thousand, eight-hundred-and-eighty-eight dollars for a net savings of a hundred-and-forty-eight thousand, five-hundred-and-eighty-four dollars. I'm pleased to be able to report that. So we'll see a town savings and an employee's savings, both in health insurance and this recommended budget. I believe next to the water fund, recommended budget is three million, one-hundred-and-sixty-thousand, seven-hundred-and-twenty-six dollars. That's down from the present fiscal year of three million, two-hundred-and-ninety-three dollars, three million, two-hundred-and-ninety-three thousand, six-hundred-and-eighty-seven dollars. No water rate increases, no change in other fees in the water fund. Water, the water fund capital projects, we're recommending a water system master plan of a hundred-and-thirty-seven thousand, five-hundred cash. Waterline extension from Mourning View to Becker Street, a hundred-and-sixty-three thousand, five-hundred dollars. An excavator of thirty-four thousand financed the first year at eight thousand, eight-hundred dollars. The septic health oil-water separator for the trucks, what this is, is when the, when the trucks, sanitation trucks get washed out, we need to be able to not send as much to the septic system as we have been. The utility billing for the software, thirty-nine thousand, nine-hundred-and-twenty-five for the, for the financial software, the first year of that finance would be eight thousand, four-hundred-and-sixty-four dollars. And recommended is a new water distribution technician position, and that total salary with benefits is fifty-eight thousand, eight-hundred-and-two dollars. This one's a little bit easier to read than the other, but the expenditures, you'll see half at water operations, water distribution making up about a fourth, and then inter-fund water administration and the septic health initiative rounding out the expenditures. Revenues, obviously, the, the majority of the revenues that come from the waterfront are from billing, almost eighty-seven percent with very small investment earnings and other, other bills and sources of revenue. Of those three-cent tax increase, I'm recommending to the board that in lieu of collecting stormwater fees that we have in the years past, to start dedicating one cent of the property tax to a stormwater fund, similar to what we've been doing with Parks and Paths. So while the revenue is almost a net, it obviously is not a wash for property owners because it would be figured into the property tax, but of, of that stormwater, part of that penny for capital projects in the stormwater fund, we're recommending that we be able to finish some infrastructure mapping of fifty-seven thousand, five-hundred. Some drainage improvement projects of eighteen thousand. Our third and final year of the Redrum Outfall payment of sixty-two thousand, five-hundred. This is for the extension to the Redrum Outfall that was done three previous years ago, and we've got some improvements that we need to address for drainage on Soundside Road at thirty-seven thousand dollars. That is it in a nutshell. The board has workshops that have been scheduled, May thirteenth, May twenty-third, and June second. Those are scheduled at nine a.m. in this room. The board will need to set a public hearing, which has traditionally been done at your first meeting in June, which would be June first of this year. And then, of course, by statute, you must adopt the budget by June thirtieth, but traditionally, it's been the mid-month meeting for the board, which this year would be June fifteenth traditionally. There have been times where it hadn't.
There have been times where it was all the thirtieth of June.
Midnight on the thirtieth.
It was tough.
Again, I do want to thank the board. I do want to thank the staff and department heads for their hard work in putting this together this year. This is our first budget with Amy Miller, and she's done an outstanding job. I think you'll appreciate some of the, the ease of reading the budget document, which is hopefully in the right font, large enough font. Thank you.
Quite a book to study. Thanks, Cliff. Any questions for Cliff at this time?
Yes, sir.
All right, we will discuss this further on the, on the thirteenth. Next item on the agenda is for the Board Commissioner's agenda, and we have Commissioner DeMarest listed for the status of Soundside Boardwalk. Did you get the information you needed for that?
Pardon?
Did you get the information that you needed for that?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. Wanted to give just a brief update. It's not a committee report because we have not planned or conducted any committee meetings per board direction from back in November, but what we did discuss back then was that we needed to close out four separate actions before we dissolved this committee, and I wanted to run down those very quickly. Number one condition was that we complete the environmental and surveying work that was entailed in this project that has been completed. Second was that the town worked toward acquiring the easements and put those on the shelf. That is included in the plan for this coming year and is covered in the budget that was just presented, so that's not a committee action at all. Third was that we, the board adopted a zoning amendment, dealing with exempting any boardwalks from lot coverage. Again, that is not a committee action. That would be a staff action, so that is in staff's hands. And the last and the most challenging was to work with the Tourism Board to determine whether a boardwalk could actually be constructed on the Catfish Farm. Not that necessarily. We would intend to do so, but just to solve or resolve that legal question, we're continuing to work that, so that one remains outstanding, should be completed in the near timeframe. We have attorney involved from the Tourism Board and the town attorney involved with differing interpretations of what the easement is that the town has with the state and the wording that's in that easement. So when we get that resolved, that will put the fourth and last condition to bed, and then we can proceed with any future action with dissolving this committee, which is what the, the board has expressed its intent to do. And the only reason we would not do that would be if the board came out with new direction, that there would be a new charge, different work for such a committee, and that is not being proposed at this time.
Okay. You're not proposing any action at this time, but to continue on the path of John to resolve these outstanding issues.
Yes, sir.
Any questions for Commissioner DeMarest on this?
Just one. Has the board taken any action to authorize the town attorney to work with the Tourism Board attorney?
No, the board hasn't taken any action to authorize working with, and the, as far as I know, they're not working with. It's just that we do have input from each independently.
Just a curiosity question. I thought at one of our workshops, the consensus was we were really interested moving forward on the easement process for the Tanger North, but we were not interested in pursuing at this time anything south. Is that correct?
That is correct because we, we know that the easements to the south are not being, not getting any corporation support there. That's correct.
All right. Thank you.
We did want that one question answered on, well, any possible future action, that one question answered on the Catfish Farm, this discussion that we had at our last meeting here.
Not really. That was a settled issue. We're not interested in easements heading south. We don't care about Catfish Farm. I thought we were just gonna put these other easements to the north to bed and call this thing done. It never goes away. Something I said two years ago.
I think that was not the board action, Commissioner Rastburg. I think the board action at that time was to, to, yes, get the easements from Tanger North, but also to solve that, solve that one issue on the, on the Catfish Farm, because there was a lot of diverse comments on that.
I don't remember that. Somebody, I, I don't remember that. Since we're not getting easements down there, why do we care what the issue is? And I certainly really hate to see staff spending time on this lot coverage zoning issue when we've got staff stacked to the gills with other stuff.
Perhaps Commissioner Walters can be involved in this comp, or Mayor Proton Walters could be involved in this, because I don't think they've asked for any action or opinions from their attorney at this time.
Right. They've gotten, their, their, Lee Nellis, Executive Director, forwarded us the easement language that goes with that particular piece of property. We don't have a written opinion from their attorney. Verbally, it's been conveyed to us that, that his opinion is that we couldn't put in, we couldn't put a boardwalk there if we, if the board chose to do so, which, which you haven't. But the question remains unanswered as to whether or not, because our, our interpretation is not the same. It's, it's just an unresolved question that half of you want to answer and half of you don't.
We never, we never know when that board, boardwalk project needs to, might take off again, and it's, the question needs to be answered. There is allowance for, I understand, for a greenway across that property.
That's, that's right.
There, so there is, there is some possibilities of different interpretations there.
Okay, because I know the, last I had heard, the Tourism Board had not asked their opinion, their attorney for a formal opinion.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know that. You're right. They haven't acted to, to do so.
Commissioner Rastburg, you have two items?
Yeah, just quickly. We had a great little community watch last month over at Wave Riders, coffee with a cop, and we had a lot of folks there, and a lot of the police department came in, and we all sat around, had coffee and snacks and chatted and this and that. And I believe at least one other police department around here got wind of it and said, "Oh, wow, we want to do it," and so that's picked up. So it's a great way for community involvement, that kind of thing, and I thought we went really well. This month, May tenth, six-thirty, in the police training room over in the main building, we're gonna have the, Fort Carolina Wildlife Officer, I lost his name, Officer Barbosa there to talk boating safety. Great topic with the, with the weather coming up. So come on out to community watch. It'll be next Tuesday at six-thirty in the training thing. I've gotten a couple of phone calls, more than a couple, on brush and bulk pickup, and I've talked with Ralph. And first off, there's an awful lot of people that aren't treating the side with the roadways and the rest of it in the town with any respect. And some of that's contractors and stuff like that, who are just dumping junk around. I've never seen a place look like it. And we've been out picking up, we, I know there were trucks on the road yesterday, today. There was, I watched two of them working South Naggshead, and they're working as fast as they can, but I drove most of this town, and I'm amazed or appalled at the amount of stuff that's there. And quite a bit of it looks like if somebody sees a pile, they throw something on it, and that is, really boils down to contractors shortcutting things. And there's an awful lot of stuff there where you see one single little item that evidently somebody could not be bothered to take up to Lark Street or something else and just tossed it to the side of the road and let us worry about picking it up. We went to the point of having Lark Street open Saturdays. We went to the point of having it open Sundays, so there's no excuse. You come down here on a weekend, that you can't do some of the work for yourself, not Sunday but Monday.
Right.
There's no excuse. You can't do some of this hauling for yourself. There are certain ways. We're supposed to prepare the brush and other things, length, the way in which it's supposed to be done, and it's not being done. So I'm not convinced that the community cares that much about the way we look, and they're laying it on the town to pick it up. That said, it's a fact of life. And it's my opinion that we, or what I'd like to ask the board is to ask staff to look at, do we need to make a change in the rules and how we do this? And specifically then, do we also need to look at some kind of surge capability to handle the April-May problem? Because, I mean, even with our two, our staff working all day, there's a limit to how much we can do, and I gave up at thirty-six TVs throughout the town. I gave up at well into the two-hundred and some piles of brush and garbage, and I did not hit all areas in town, but I hit most of them. And I mean, the amount that's out there is massive. It's not because we haven't been picking it up. It's because they come in on a weekend, and the next thing you know, there it is. So we need to look at some way to handle this in the future. We cannot let this happen regularly.
Yes.
I observed the same thing, and I asked the manager, "Think about putting it on the water bills." We do not pick up all year round, because we keep having owners change. So you might get one owner trained, and the next few months, you're gonna have another owner to put it out on water bills when we pick up and when we don't pick up, as well as a lot of stuff that's appearing is from contractors. In one spot, the people, contractors put it out three different times, and I think we ought to be really proactive about going in and telling those contractors at that condominium complex that they have a responsibility to haul it away. But there's one in South Naggshead where it gets put out. This is the third time this spring that I know they've hauled out from that condominium, or, excuse me. I guess it's condo now. It's not a timeshare anymore. I'm not sure what it is. I think it's condos now. But, and we also ought to have a big blurb on the front of our town page. We ought to have it on our Facebook. And quite honestly, I think our PIO ought to be putting articles in the paper, as well as to the Voice, the rules and regs, and sending out press releases, and put us in the North Beach Sun, or put us in the Coastline Times, or put us in, if there's another paper. But we need to be a little proactive on our side as well to try to address this. And so a lot of it's through education and reiterating and reiterating and reiterating on our website and Facebook page and news articles.
Defensive, and I agree with everything you said, and I want to throw this out to people, residents, particularly non-resident property owners. They contract with somebody to clear their brush and do their stuff. That contract probably, or it should, have a tipping fee.
Well, he collected for it. He's just not.
And, and, you know, it's, you're paying a tipping fee, four or five hundred bucks on there, and the guy's just throwing it on the side of the road. He's taking your money and making your town look, you know, look bad. And I, I would be wondering, you know, when you hire And I, I would be wondering, you know, when you hire somebody, it says, you know, show me, you, show me some, some reason that you tipped this. You know, show me some proof you did this. I wouldn't pay him any money till you got it. I mean, that's part of the issue. And I don't wanna lay it all on contractors, 'cause certainly there's people doing the same thing. But it's, it is an issue.
Well, I agree, agree with what you, what you've said, but I think we need to, some mechanism for enforcing that, that contract debris, contracted debris not be placed on the roadside. That, that's been around for years, and we used, we used to be able to patrol that fairly well. We need to get back to that point. And Cliff, I don't know how we, how we go about doing that, whether it's part of a building permit or, or how we do it, but we need to make sure that contractors are taking care of their own debris, 'cause that, that does mount up to a lot.
Yes, sir.
Code enforcement, issue a few tickets, it gets back through the community for, pretty quickly. The code enforcement is one of it. And I know we've got a vacancy right now, but that's one way you handle some of that stuff.
Any further discussion on?
Can we, can we ask for a, a plan? I mean, let's, I don't wanna just leave this here. Can we talk in a few months?
I think, I think we just felt under plan, and that will, will, we will develop a mechanism to enforce the, the, the contractors taking, taking care of their own debris, and then recommendations from Commissioner Kahoon on, on how we advertise across all media outlets on when we pick up, when we don't pick up, what we pick up, what we don't pick up. Is that what, is that what I heard?
And if, if the board's okay with this, we can report back on a future agenda progress, just to bring you back.
If you would, please, sir.
But I would like to also consider in their suggestion of a surge capability, be sure we get it, get it gone. I hate to use that word, surge capability, but.
Ralph requested, and I authorized some overtime, so his guys can, can really get, get on this.
Could I just ask for one modification to that? And it, it's not just limited to contractors. Homeowners themselves do a lot of work of their own, and they can easily schedule a site services trash box or whatever, and throw their stuff in and get it carried away and pay for it. But if they do massive demolition and reconstruction and take all that stuff and put it out on the street, they're not paying for it.
Or might relabel that construction debris, whether it's a homeowner's construction debris or contractor's construction debris. That is something we don't pick up. I think that's been a, kind of a rule in the past.
And isn't there a new rule on TVs and stuff in landfills and things?
Yep, they're, we don't take them at the debris or.
Well, we do, we, but we, we have to recycle them.
Right.
You know, and that, that's, that's the other part of it that, with, with the new recycle rules and stuff, that slows the whole process down. And things at the landfill, like furniture, like couches and stuff, mattresses, that all has to be separated out. That has to go to a separate part of landfill. TVs have to be picked up separate. They have to go somewhere else. They have to be recycled out, you know. Again, other, white goods, they have to be picked up, you know, dishwashers, refrigerators, things like that. And that, you know, that's, that's some of the other part of it, is that we pick these things up, 'cause we always have, but there's fees. I mean, somebody, you buy a new refrigerator, they will take your old refrigerator away for you. But we always seem to find refrigerators and dishwashers ending up in the right of way somewhere around here. You know, it's the same thing with, you'll go buy a house, and there's three toilets sitting out there. Well, you pretty much know that the homeowner didn't change out all three of them toilets, you know. So I mean, that, that's, that's the part of it that, that we run into. It was fun, yesterday, it wasn't funny, but I asked Cliff, there was a trailer that was sitting here. It was a red trailer. It was here, I seen it Friday, noticed it again Monday. Well, yesterday, it was still here, so I went over and looked at it. Has no tags or anything else. And basically, there was stuff piled on it, but it all looked like junk, so we told the guys, just this morning, I said, "Just tell it if the pile works, and we'll put it up there for a couple of days and see if somebody claimed it," but.
Auction it off.
You know, it's, it, well, it's not in very good shape, but that's what I mean. Somebody just backed the trailer right here and left it. And I told Cliff, I said, "I don't know if I should leave it there for the board meeting tomorrow, and everybody can go out and look at it, just to see if some of the stuff we're up against," you know. But, I mean, they just pulled it in here, backed it up, dropped it off, and that was it. So I mean, you know, we see more and more of it, and since the county has started charging for everything, and it's such a haul for contractors to take the stuff over there, it's just kinda easier to bring it to Nag's Head, because it'll get picked up. You know, I, I'm, and then we have landscape contractors will call us and say, "We're calling, we're calling on behalf of the homeowner. They want you to come pick this up." You know? We'd say, "Okay, give us the address," and then they'll say, "Well," they don't give us the address, they just hang up. So I mean, that's, that's some of the stuff that we're running into.
Well, I'm gonna put a plug in for one local business, that when you buy appliances from a Manio Furniture comes and takes all your stuff back out. Nothing's put on the side of the road. You can be assured that when you buy something, you don't find it dumped on the side of the road, and you don't find huge delivery fees. They deliver for free and they pick up the old stuff.
Doesn't matter if they put the old one in or not.
That's right. They give great service, and they don't pollute our community.
You know, it was the same.
From experience I had over the weekend, Lowe's and Home Depot do the same thing, but they'll charge you 15 bucks for taking the old one off.
Right, Manio Furniture doesn't charge you to take it out.
They probably bring it here and kick it out of the truck.
There's an impetus for, uh, because they don't charge the homeowner to take off the old stuff.
You know, me and Cliff talked about it a little too, maybe for, for the month of March and April, if we would contract with somebody just to come do the brush, if they chip it and do whatever they want. But let them come in and do the brush, get a price on that.
That might, that.
To help reduce it and get it out of the way.
If we're paying overtime, that might be worth looking at. And, and, 'cause you're, you're taking it up to Lark Street and chipping it anyway. So we're, we're paying on both ends, paying to pick it up, and we're paying to chip it. So that might, that might give us a, a surge capacity we're talking about for, for April. Then getting the contracted, contracted debris out of, out of our pickup. And, you know, the county, county picks up two days a year.
Yes, everybody, county, county Kill, Killable Hills only picks up two days a year. One day in the spring, one day in the fall.
And they advertise it in the paper, and they tell you what you can and can't put out. That's right.
Just one final comment to that, to the people of the town of Nag's Head, you need to be, you know, it's a community watch type thing, policing your own neighborhoods. When you start seeing those piles of stuff show up there, you should be curious as to why it's there and going on. You know, how that stuff ends up there in your neighborhood.
Okay.
One more item, Mayor.
All right.
Last month, I mentioned that we'd had a Sergeant Billy Brown, who had, and his wife Marcia had done so much for the Dare County Veterans Advisory Committee and for the veterans in the town. Well, we had a fundraiser for him. He'd been diagnosed with brain cancer. And I got a note recently that, that's been confirmed, it's inoperable. He's got about six weeks of treatment here in, in Nag's Head. The phone numbers, their phone numbers and email have been well published, and if you have any interest or thoughts. I mean, the visitors to the home and that are, are appreciated, but, anyway, I just thought I'd bring that up.
Okay, thank you, thank you, John. Commissioner Kahoon?
Thank you. Mayor, I was interested in knowing if the board is, has any interest in pursuing the possibility of working and approaching the owners of the 10.5 shops to perhaps develop a sidewalk. Since there's a stoplight at Nag's Head Acres to 10.5, and then it goes right on through Admiral Street to a beach access. And that's two of our larger communities which connect would be the Pond and Nag's Head Acres. Working with the owners of 10.5 to perhaps develop a sidewalk through there somehow, with perhaps no penalty for lot coverage, since it's in the public interest. And being kind of innovative, innovative in how we approach it. Doesn't all have to be concrete. It could be, you know, other things, but is the board interested in even having the manager approach the owners of 10.5 to look at something like that?
I hope so, 'cause I put $15,000 in the recommended budget to address that issue. I failed to mention that.
But I think it would benefit our citizens greatly, 'cause right now we've got kind of a dead-end sidewalk. It takes you 10.5, but it doesn't take you through 10.5. So if you're not interested in shopping, but you're interested in going to the beach, and maybe it would encourage people to walk and bicycle instead of driving, so it might cut down on traffic through there.
It's a safety issue through there, and it's something we definitely need to take a look at, and I've talked with the town manager and assistant town manager. Both, both possibilities. It's, 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 it's a tough deal to get it through there, but it's something we should talk with the owners about.
But the owners would either say yes or no, and, or indicate some willingness to it, as if, if it's our idea, maybe no financial thing to them.
No lot coverage penalty.
No lot coverage penalty or anything like that. But it, it also might make it easier for people to get to their shopping center.
Is that something the board would like for the town manager to pursue?
Better than a boardwalk.
Yeah, thank you. Couple more things, if you don't.
Only boardwalk still.
Thank you very much. Had a lot of complaints in the past few weeks about the old abandoned go-kart track north of Tortugas that has become an eyesore, and especially from some of the business community that were worried about displays. Let's take a look at how bad that looks up there. And the other, this is my personal comment today. I noticed that with the visitor season starting, those little cars are out there, and I really do think we're gonna have some accidents this year. I almost saw three over the weekend, and I know those little cars are legal, but people driving them have no clue. They've had 15 minutes, if that, of instruction, and they're pulling in and out of traffic. And if you're in a big truck or a little car, they're just, to me, they're a safety nightmare waiting to happen. They are invisible, and people zoom in and out. They suddenly pull off on the side of the road, even when pedestrians are walking. So I'm worried even that they can hit somebody. So that's just my safety comment of the day. And Chief, I know you can't do a thing about it, except respond to the calls, but I don't consider those necessarily a good addition to our community from a safety standpoint.
I agree on the safety standpoint. We have talked to the owner of that establishment about maybe certain rules for the road. Are they allowed to go on the bypass? By the law, yes, but it's not a good recommendation about keeping them on certain areas, 'cause we've had complaints, they were down on Highway 12.
They were over the weekend. I saw them make the circle.
And we didn't get the willingness for cooperation there, but we will go back and try to approach that again.
Did we try, didn't we try last year to ask them to put little flags on those things, so we could at least, you could, you know, little, little flags that you could see them in traffic? I mean, kinda like folks do with bicycles and stuff.
Kelly White was saying yes, 'cause I know that there were some conversations that I think they had with them as well, but I believe so. And we can, we can certainly try that again, Commissioner Rastburg.
Try that as a legislative issue.
Well, I also observed, since there was a fundraiser at the pier, and lots of business at Outer Banks Pier over the weekend, they were darting in and out, and there was traffic, crazy traffic, which was a good thing for the fundraiser. But those little cars were creating chaos down there, along with multiple scooters that were weaving in and out of them.
I hear your concerns, and I, I agree with you as well.
Thank you, thank you, Mayor.
Mayor, we forgot one thing that we put in there. That's the CRC questions. They weren't in red, so I missed them on the agenda here.
Before we go back to that, could, could I make a comment on the mopeds and, and all that? Looking at the inventory that they have there this year at that location, they look more like motorcycles than mopeds. And I'm just wondering, are we allowed to actively check to see if they're meeting the horsepower and speed requirements that qualify them to be mopeds? 'Cause I, I think they may well be getting out of hand.
Well, I will tell you, effective July 1st, every moped has to carry a minimum of $30,000 insurance on it, which has not been in the past.
License doesn't have insurance, both, which is, license started last year, insurance this year.
But you're right.
How about the number of vehicles that are available on that site? Are they, they're just jammed in there? Do we have any, any regulation on the number of vehicles they can have there?
They have a minimum amount of parking spaces that they have to maintain, but other than inventory on site, I'm not sure. Other than meeting the parking space requirement, if they're limited.
They've, they've got them even parked now. I guess it's on the grass, in parking spaces.
Then I think we can address that.
In parking spaces on the back part of the lot as well, which I don't know if they're there or not.
Right of way, we can address that.
If they're right of way, and they don't have a proper number of parking spaces, 'cause they're, 'cause they're filled with, with inventory, then I think we, we can address some of that.
It's actually forcing the tenants of the building there upstairs to park in the front on the sidewalk, because he's using everything in the back.
Which is not theirs to use, 'cause some of those are rented spaces, and those parking spaces go to the rented space, not to the building, that building owner there. And there's some other issues other than residents there.
Yeah, by, by definition, those vehicles are considered mopeds, and they're required to have a, no more than a certain CC engine.
49 cc engine.
Yes, sir.
Actually, 49, 49.
And I actually got the DMV inspector that was working in our area last summer, he went down and inspected each and every unit, and they were in compliance at that time. So it's something that we took the initiative on to do last year, and we can certainly look at the, the units that he has again as well. 'Cause some of them, even with this, the 49.9, less than 50 cc's, they're not, not allowed to go over 30 miles per hour, I believe. And we had some of.
35, I think.
Was it 30, 30 or 35, but we had them going 45 and a little bit higher, so.
On the B train.
There's, there's been.
Speeding ticket.
That's right.
Get a good tailwind, they'll get up to 45.
Yes, sir.
Speeding ticket.
Every Red Bull American will, boy, will soup up this vehicle. Now, there's nothing wrong with that at all.
Somebody rode one of them last year.
Thank you, Mayor, that's all I have.
All right, so you finished?
All right, back to you, John.
Yeah, me. I forgot the one item on here. Part of down it with BWA was the Chairman of the CRC, and you should know all about this, asked us, every town, to submit two items that they'd like the CRC to address. And the, the request came, that was submitted back through Ms. Riley, the BWA, to him.
Possibly addressed.
Possible, well, back, we can hold y'all's feet to the fire on it. We put our issues in, we expect. So anyway, the staff did make some recommendations down here. Again, we have to separate the legal from what the CRC can do, so. On your, I think on your, your summary sheet, I don't know, Roberta, can you put that up for L2?
Didn't make it on mine.
Not on the, not on your agenda, on the, the summary sheet for L2. There it is, right there.
Okay.
Maybe blow them up or center it better or something.
The top three can't be addressed by CRC.
Right.
Out, groins can only be addressed by the legislature, 'cause right now there's only four permitted. So that would be a issue for.
All four of those taken.
Six, isn't it?
It was four.
Four have been permitted. Four have been allowed by legislature.
Legislature allows four.
All four of them have not been, there's been two.
Two that don't allow them.
Two that have been asked for permits, and have undergone their environmental studies. But right now, we don't qualify, because we're not, they're called terminal groins.
Terminal groin.
And we're not on a terminus. That'd be something to ask for, look, changing the bill to the law and the legislature to perhaps allow groins and not just terminal groins.
Terminal groin, terminal groin, you have got to be, that's usually to an end with, is where they're delimited now.
Permitting is something that would go through coastal management. Living shorelines would go through coastal management, which would just, are adopting rules to encourage marsh seals, to make those easier to permit and get, rather than encouraging just bulkheads. just bulkheads. But living shorelines are a good one, because that's, there's a lot of interest in that. Beach nourishment permitting is one that's a CRC, or actually, not really CRC, but Division of Coastal Management. So, there's a couple of things that could be done. Ease of permitting may be perhaps a rule change, or beach nourishment permitting could be a rule change, but those would be CRC issues.
What do we want to forward there? Ease of permitting, and groins, we need to talk with legislators, legislators about, change the language, so they aren't listed as terminal groins, but just groins. And beach nourishment permitting, the other one, that's ease of permitting still.
I think so.
And you're talking living shorelines and ease of permitting, are there two we want to go forward?
And I'm not submerged breakwaters or artificial reefs, I think that's going to be a law change as well, because they're not allowed right now by law, but, I mean, you submit whatever you want, but if these are the submit things that...
Have a chance.
That have a chance, than things that can't be dealt with.
I, I wouldn't, I'm not so sure about the beach nourishment side of it, that's, I think our problems, David, you can correct me, I think our problems with permitting are at the federal level. The, the, I mean, the amount of, the state is not really in, in the middle of that very much. General day-to-day permitting of actions up and down here, yes, but the beach is a different ballgame.
What happens under beach nourishment permitting? We apply to CAMA for a permit, but there's fourteen different agencies that are allowed to comment, and like on our last permit for beach nourishment, Fish and Wildlife asked for three different years, or four years of extensions, before they even submitted their comments, so, which perhaps, under beach nourishment permitting, we should say, please change the rule to limit the time period, or a number of extensions allowed. That may be one that...
May be one that would help us.
Yeah, maybe, yeah, that's a good one.
You know, quit, quit allowing years and years of extensions, get your comments in.
Procrastination.
That was definitely a topic down at BWA.
But that may be one that asks the state to go ahead, and if permits are not issued, comments are not issued in a timeframe.
Common amount of them you skipped.
Yeah, that may be the...
The ease of permitting could cover a variety of topics too, to include the outfalls, where we had to go through for Red Drum, the extended process of getting that permit approved as a variance.
Right.
And it was suggested that change the rules, so that it's a permitted action or variance.
Not variance, right. Okay, we got ease of permitting, and then living shorelines, and some of the ease of permitting, beach nourishment permitting.
All right. Let me, let me, let me write, I just took brief notes here, let me write something up, and then pass it around. Any final wording, fixes?
All right. Anything else on the commissioner, board commissioners' agenda? Town Hall Day in Raleigh is Wednesday, June 8th. I plan to go, Cliff plans to go, Commissioner Ratzenberger?
I'm, I'm available if...
Ready to go.
If, doesn't say that, it said I'm available.
I'd like to get as many of our representatives there as we could.
Okay.
Does anybody else want to, want to sign up?
I'll let you know, but I can't commit right at this particular date.
All right, Michelle, know who's going, how about you, Marvin?
I can't make a commitment right now.
And I know Susie Kane also, so, just keep that in mind, and let, and let me know if you can, can make a commitment.
Well, you got mine, Susie.
Groundbreaking for Doughty Park, I'd like to schedule that for Wednesday, July the 6th, at Highland. If that's okay. And we'll ask Roberta to do a lot, a lot of work on that, we want to get the right people, the right people invited, and put on the shovel, but we will not have gold shovels.
I was about ready to say, no gold shovels, or plain shovels.
We'll ask Ralph to supply some well-used shovels.
Well-used shovels from public work. Got one I'll donate.
We will also have on, just looking ahead, on June 15th.
14th.
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 June 14th, at 11 o'clock, we will have the Nags 50, Nags Head 55th Anniversary Celebration that'll be at Town Hall, and we will be at that time awarding the Nags Header and the Nags Head Lightkeeper Awards. So, that'll be June 14th at 11 a.m.
Yeah, thank you. Good.
Is there anything else we need to talk about today?
Mr. Mayor, one thing I wanted to remind the board is that I will not be at the June 1 meeting, Robert Hobbs will be covering that meeting, as we discussed a couple of months ago.
All right, good.
But I'll be with you in spirit.
Yeah, as long, so long as you're with us in spirit. And you're on the other end of your cell phone.
I, I will, I will be.
We will recess at this time until 9 a.m. on May 13th in this room, and that will be for a budget, budget workshop.
Thank you.
We did make it, probably going to be all there.
You did well, Mayor.